Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to April 19th, 2022, with the work session of Limestone County Commission. First on the agenda on a public comment, we have Mr. Allen Griffin in Austin Pike. I don't know if Austin, I guess, came today?
I have to say thank you.
Well, if you don't mind coming here at the microphone. He had came to me the other day, reached out to me about CASA, wanting to use a police office down at the Community Corrections Building. I told him to come and present it to y'all. Doing all right this morning, Allen?
We're doing great.
Well, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I am Allen Griffin, and I work for CASA of North Alabama. CASA of North Alabama stands for Court Appointed Special Advocate. We are appointed in juvenile dependency cases wherein we go in and do an investigation and make a report to the court to aid the court in making a decision on what's in the best interest of a child in a juvenile dependency case. CASA of North Alabama covers Limestone and Morgan County. Morgan County started theirs prior to Limestone County, but we've been in them for Limestone County for years. Our office is currently located in Morgan County in the Progressive Bank Building, and when CASA started over there, the Morgan County Courthouse allowed them to use a very small area for a period of a couple of years in order to get their numbers up so they could submit for payment of rent on office space. CASA in North Alabama and Limestone County has grown to the point now our juvenile court judge is wanting to send a majority of the juvenile dependency cases through CASA to get a copy of our report investigation. So, we are requesting that the commission allow us to use two offices in the Community Corrections Office that are not being used for a period of no more than two years in order to get our numbers up so when we can submit our grant in order to cover the cost of office space in Limestone County. The office space would be used by myself and the other supervisor, Ms. Austin Pike. We would, it would just be for our use and a place to keep our files. Our files, because they're juvenile dependency files, are confidential and have to be kept under lock and key in a locked filing cabinet within a locked room. So currently, anytime she or I or any of our volunteers need a file, we have to go to Morgan County to go get them because that's the only safe place for them currently. And I've passed out some information regarding who we are, what we do, and what we're asking for to each of you, and that's my request for the commission, if at all possible. I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you very much, and if y'all have any questions, please let me know.
Anybody have anything for Allen?
No.
Nope. And I reached out to Mandy, and these two, it wouldn't be any cost to the county. They'd just be using the offices already in the building, and then Mandy said she was fine with it. And I did reach out, then he reached out to me, and I told him just to come present it to y'all because y'all would be the guys that would make the ultimate decision whether or not to decide to let them do it or not.
That's good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Allen, thank you for coming.
Appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you, Allen. Something we gotta keep in front of us, childhood stuff. Allen, do we have any more public comment?
Yes, Bethany Shotney.
Bethany? Do you have any? Okay. Do you need to discuss anything with it or anything? Yeah, come on up here now. How are you doing today, Bethany?
Good.
Doing great. This is for Greg Weatherford, right? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Great, and thank you. I'm Bethany Shotney with Limestone County Economic Development, and I come today to y'all asking for consideration for tax abatement for North Alabama Laser Fab located in Lester, Alabama. And as the Tax Form Act of 1992 allows, the appropriate city or county or public industrial authority, the ability to grant any state sales tax and city and county sales tax not earmarked for education and the state, city, or county noneducational property tax. And so, y'all would be, because of where it's located, y'all would be the granting authority for that. North Alabama Laser Fab currently has 26 employees, and they plan to purchase a new laser cutter, brake press, and additional 2,100 square feet for a total cost of $803,000. And the company is requesting sales and property tax abatements to the tune of, sales tax would be a one-time abated amount for approximately $11,445. The new educational taxes that would be paid because of this would be approximately $7,600, which would go straight to the schools. Property tax abated will be approximately $2,011 per year for 10 years for a total of And new educational taxes for this would be approximately $15,383 straight to the schools. So, North Alabama Laser Fab, they have committed to hiring additional 10 people over the next three years, bringing their total employment up to 36. So, LCEDA recommends the approval of this tax abatement application.
All right. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Have any questions?
Thank you.
Good with it.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth. All right. Allen, do we have any more?
No further comments.
All right, thank you. So, we'll be moving on, on the agenda, forget the agenda today. First thing on here, we got the meeting minutes for April 4th, 2022, and which all of you got a copy of them in front of you. Does anybody have any discussion with the minutes? Nobody discussing. We'll move on, claims, if we have a claim in a total amount of $1,442,958.36. Anybody got a discussion with claims? All righty, resolutives and orders, first thing on here would be to approve a resolution regarding the sale of real property located in the Athens-Limestone County Highway 31 Industrial Park. This is the land down around the, that us and the city joint on together, down around the, I hope Clyde Mayberry Drive, down around the Health Department. It's where we're selling the grant land and the other places down there. Anybody having discussion with that? All right, number two is approve a resolution providing Limestone County participating in the July 15th through the 17th back-to-school sales tax holiday. It's hard to believe we're already talking about back-to-school. This year is flying by. Anybody got a discussion with that? That's just something we automatically do every year for the weekend. All right, no more discussion with that. We'll move on, number three, approve a resolution for expenditures of the American Rescue Plan Act Fund for direct administrative personnel costs. And this is just for the art of money stuff, and this is where we can submit claims to that. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right, and fourth on here will be to approve a resolution to authorize expenditures of American Rescue Act funds for the governmental services using the revenue replacement funds. And this is, we gotta approve a resolution every time that we spend that money. So, we got a discussion with either one of those? All right.
What money from the American Rescue Plan is being put, forced to help our areas?
Well, we'll explain that in our comments. We can't talk back and forth right now, but we'll explain it to you in a minute. Approve a resolution, an agreement to grant tax abatement for the North Alabama Laser Fab, and this is what Bethany just explained to us. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right, no discussion with that. Moving on, contracts, agreements, and grants. Approve a yearly service contract, rapid scan for the courthouse security scanner in the amount of $4,620, and this is the security where you run your purse and stuff through at the courthouse. Anybody got a discussion with that? Y'all mighty quiet today. We have a budget revision here, so for Engineering Department, what we have is here is a $621,897 budget revision. This is to purchase the new milling machine that we had talked about last week, and we have a $210,000 trade-in value from our other one, which we'll get to a little further down here, and will leave us with $411,874, $79. Anybody got a discussion with that? All right. Mark, do you have anything on that, any thing to go with that?
I don't have anything really to add. I mean, we, they have this machine on site, and we should be able to get it this week.
This week? Yeah, I know this will really speed up our paving season, so it'll be a good piece of equipment. Anybody got any more discussion with it? All right, we have no merchant purchases, no board appointments, and award of bids, and I know we'll have a discussion on this, but we've got four bids to award here. Of course, they're all listed below, but the one thing on here that I know we're going to have a discussion on is, is we had no pipe bid for concrete pipe periods, so.
We rebid this after we received a no bid in our typical bid cycle. So, we rebid this, and we received a no bid. We received no bids again. So, this pretty much, I mean, and we contacted the pipe suppliers. They said with volatility of the steel markets, they just can't give a bid for a year bid. So, we do have still, the only really real bids we have at our disposal are the ACCA joint bid, and again, the only concrete pipe on that would be picked up in Mobile. Yeah. So, that's really not a good option. So, Contech has a steel pipe bid that we could utilize, that they will deliver to us. We have reached out and gotten pricing. My thought is, we do have a, we do have a resolution in place for only concrete pipe being installed under the roads currently. So, I think that we, we would have to do a suspend that resolution for a period of one year until we could possibly get a bid in in the next bid cycle. But if we bought just the best metal pipe that we could buy, the highest gauge and something like an aluminized coating, just, I mean, that, those, that pipe should last 35, 40 years.
Do we need to get this on the agenda? I recommend that we...
We suspend that resolution temporarily?
Yeah.
Is that what you're...
Yeah, because I've got three already that need replaced under some roads that are getting in really bad shape, that are metal pipe, but what are you gonna do, close the road? You know? No. I recommend that we suspend the resolution.
And just try to purchase using the state, I mean, the ACCA joint bid? Because, I mean, that's, that's the kind of direction that I need, just to...
Is this box, is this concrete box culverts and stuff? Is this the square ones too?
It's anything concrete. We didn't get any bids on anything concrete.
You know, me...
And the way the bid, the thing is, is we get stuck in a bid law. The way the bid law works, if we get only one bid, it opens us up to negotiate and try to determine an annual bid, an annual price. But the way the bid law works, if you get no bids, then you really, I mean, you have to rebid until you get a bid. So, they're not gonna bid for us. I mean, they just, two different pipe companies, well, three. One out of Tennessee, we contacted, they all three said the same thing, just volatility of steel, that they just couldn't, they couldn't bid. The steel pipe that we can buy off the ACCA bid is, I mean, it's more expensive than what we were paying for concrete last year, but it is a pipe that we can get and keeps us moving forward. So, this is just a difficult market, and so, we're trying to, to try to make the best that we can. Like I said, my, my only suggestion, y'all may have some other ideas, would be just to temporarily suspend, and I'd say for one year until we could, until we could try to get another bid in the next bid cycle, that temporarily suspend the resolution that requires concrete pipe, and then us buy off the ACCA joint bid.
Where does this metal come from?
Comes from Contech, so they've got two, three plants. It depends on the size. I think, I think Fort Payne, I think there's maybe somewhere up in Kentucky's one location, and then, yeah, but they'll deliver to us. I think there's a minimum purchase for them to deliver, but it's not gonna be hard to get to that.
Which brings us to the next thing. What do we do about driveway culverts?
I just wrote that down for my comment.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's gonna be, if you can't get pipe, I mean, that puts you naturally disadvantaged being out of, I mean, individuals can buy pipe, you know, I mean, we can, we, you know, which we have a, well, I think we do some cover fees now, some and whatnots, but...
Yeah, currently, the way we're operating is if they can supply the pipe, then we will, we will cover it, provide the labor and equipment to cover it for a fee. That's just the only way we can operate. That's the only thing we currently have at our disposal, to be able to, to try to assist and protect the right of way. So, I don't, I don't, we discussed, I think, in the last time that this came up, we discussed the idea of some type of a permit, something that, that we would, we would do the, the pipe sizing, and then come back and do an inspection when they get, before they cover it, something to that effect, just something to try to protect our, our drainage system when we're not the ones doing the install. That, that was thrown out there. I'm kind of at a, again, need a little bit of guidance from you guys on how you want us to proceed.
One of the things that, you know, I think, I mean, you mentioned this the other day, and I know when Anthony Quaterbaum was there, you know, one of the things that I wish that they would have been, just said, hey, market vagu or something, you know? Because we have, on a major collector road, I really hate to put a metal pipe under a, especially a 48-inch or a 50-something, you know, or something like that, you know? So, I mean, I wish they would have bid, you know, like, when you go buy seafood, it says, hey, market vagu, you know, I mean, or whatever, you know, just something...
I don't know what the legalities of a bid market is.
Legalities that is, but I mean, we, you know, to me, we're disadvantaged because we can't even buy a piece of concrete pipe today, unless we go to Mobile.
You know, before I became commissioner, what Tom and them had done, if they came to a metal pipe, and they couldn't afford to put one in and all that, they came back and they cut the inside of that metal pipe out. They got in those large pipe, and they poured concrete in the bottom. That's where it rusts out. That's where it rots out or decays or whatever. Why don't we, if you're gonna put it under the road, why don't we just go ahead and put a...
Just a concrete invert?
Just a concrete invert down in the bottom of it, just pour it in the bottom and, you know, whatever the width is, and that's where your rot comes from because the water's not standing up here on the sides, it's standing in the middle, and it gets all that mud and sand and all that in it. I mean, you're talking about, the cost of the pipes already gonna be lower because it's gonna, it's gonna be cheaper than the concrete, it's gotta be.
Yeah, it's more expensive than we paid last year, but it will be cheaper than what we purchased today.
Yeah, it'll be cheaper than concrete, so we're essentially not gonna be spending any more money if we decide to pour some concrete in the bottom of it. I don't know, it would be...
Yeah, I mean...
I don't wanna be the one to add in there. I think the engineers need to come out there and tell us if it needs to be done.
If we, if that's the, if that is the plan, we might have to increase the size a little bit, something like that, but, but I do think that, that initially, we can buy a, a quality enough pipe. Contech does multiple gauge pipes, and the aluminized, they have aluminized coating that...
That may be it, that may solve the problem anyway.
And I think it's probably a 35 to 40-year pipe, but like I said, that's a...
That'd be 93.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're probably gonna get two, two, you're probably gonna get two surfaces on it before you have to replace it.
Yeah.
I just, I, I'm like Colin, I don't really like the idea of, of putting a problem on a future generation if we can put concrete now, but for a, for this year, if, I mean, we have to continue doing roadwork.
Yeah.
And if it means, if it's, if it's in 30 to 40 years, somebody has to replace it, well, we probably won't have all the metal pipe out of the road by then anyway.
You know, and the plastic, the plastic corrugated, it's fine, you know? We've had that discussion hacked to death, but just this past year in Arkansas, there was a guy that burned his field off where his ditch caught on fire, and it melted three driveway tile where this was because the plastic burns. So, that's the headache that you have. If you've got that under the road and something catches fire and burns that plastic out from under the road, then you do have to close the road, so.
Yeah, my preference would be metal out of the options. Yeah. But, but I do think that we, but we do have that resolution in place. I think we just have to do a temporary suspension until we can get a bid. So, if y'all wanna, y'all wanna, I don't know how that works, is that, would that be a resolution to do a temporary suspension?
They could do that in the meeting if he wants to put it on.
Well, we can either do it in the meeting, how many, you said the pipes you got, does anybody else have any pipe in stock that he could use on that, to use up what we got?
Oh, I've, I'm...
Or the driveway tile?
Keeping it at bay right now.
Charge them a little extra.
But that was the full intent of that resolution.
Yeah, or, I mean, is something you've gotta do, can you wait till next meeting? We just put the resolution on, everybody write the resolution? Or we can do it today, the one, I mean, it'd be easier.
No, it's just fine, but that was the intent of that resolution. Get away from the metal.
Yeah, so that we don't have to deal with that anymore, but, I mean, it's just one of those things for a short period of time, we may just, it's the best, it's the best of bad options.
Allen, be sure to put us a note over there to get a resolution on for the next commission meeting.
What about our driveway tile? Does that include that, or would y'all wanna look at?
Well, I wrote that...
Quit doing that, or?
I can tell you, I wrote that down. I wrote down culvert driveway for my comments down here, and that's what I was, I think that's something we need to discuss, and it needs to be something we bring up and maybe make a move on sooner than later. I know we can't do it today.
I mean, trying to, trying to stay in a, I mean, I would like to know how you want to proceed.
To do the permit.
Yeah, dude, if we do the, if, if all of you think, hey, a permit might be the way to go, I can draft a permit and have, give it, to give you something to review.
And I don't want you to have to touch it again. If you go out and say it needs a 36-inch pipe, you're talking about, then if they put it in, we gotta go out and approve that they put it in right.
Well, my thing is just to make sure that they get it on the correct slope and everything. And I think LaDon brought up a good point the other day, was if they're not having to install pipe, maybe the foreman, since y'all, since most of the foremen are the ones that have been installing them, they know what to look for. It's not like we have to train anybody.
That's right.
But a foreman be able to go out, so it's not necessarily on the engineering department to do that second review. If, but like I said, I'm just kind of, we just kinda have to come up with some ideas at this point. So, I mean, if you want, if you want me to at least put something together for your review, I can.
That's what I was...
I mean, it's not really, I just need some direction so that I'm not kinda wasting my time just trying to, just trying to throw some ideas out there.
I would like to identify who's been in our right of way, like, somebody with a boring machine bored under the road out in Philip Wagnon subdivision, and they come up in the middle of the road, and I have no...
We've had, I had that, we're dealing with that right now on Davis Road.
I have no, no way of knowing, you know, who did it.
Well, we tracked down, we got, we got the home builder, and then the home builder's gonna tell us who was the contractor, who, because, you know, when the water department does it or something, they got, they usually go down far enough it doesn't affect the road, but it looks like moles have been in three locations on Davis Road all the way across because it buckles it up. So, I understand that too.
And I mean, in that, I think you could have one permit, just a right-of-way construction permit, whether you're doing a driveway, or a mailbox, or utilities, or piping a ditch, or just put it all into one. And like I said, I can put something together for your review, but I just need to know if that's something you want, or if you, I mean, like I said, that's the big thing for me.
Because then again, we go back to what Mark and I've been dealing with, is some of these subdivisions that don't have sewer, so what they're wanting to do is build these subdivisions, and they're wanting to put in these septic systems, but they're wanting to do individual homes to have these, and they're wanting to run those in our right of way. Well, you know, if that company goes out of business or something changes, we don't have anybody to go back to, and here we've allowed them to put it in our right of way. So, that's, he's already working on that, so that's good.
So, like I said, I think you could have one, one permit, and just, just more informative, just so we have contact information, we have all of that. If there's anything that does go wrong while they're doing the work, we, we don't have to go and search around and ask people, we just have a direct contact. And so, like I said, I don't, I mean, I, I don't really have any thoughts or ideas as far as how to, how to go about managing it. I know that there's more work involved in some of them than others. Driveway permit, we're already do, I mean, driveway sizing and review, we're already doing with our current budget, but some of these things, it may be where we just have to kinda look at, if you're doing an, over a certain amount of dollars in, in, in construction, maybe there's a, there's a inspection fee or something, I don't know. I'm just, and you may be completely against that, I'm just trying to come up with a way to make sure that we've got the personnel to be able to do the work.
Well, just kinda put us something together. I know a lot of time, we'll move on, on this, but, and we'll just kinda put something together, we'll review it. The other, the other two, the other three, the only three bids on here is liquid asphalt, which is argon, and the printers and stationery for the license commission and, and Decatur Printing for the other license commission stuff, so. Any discussion with any one of the bids? All right, moving on, personnel action, if it's all, y'all, the first three on here are all to approve to hire corrections officers effective April 18th, 2022, which is Stuart Fontenot, Jacob Moore, or Jacoby Moore, and Shelby Defoe. Does anybody have any discussion with any one of the three? We'll just take all those up in one action if y'all want to. And then, the fourth on here will be to approve to hire Andrew Teeples as a deputy coroner. Fifth on here will be to approve to hire Roger Allen Martin as a part-time deputy at the courthouse security pending a drug screening, and approve to transfer Joseph Lingefelter to the jail corporal, to the jail sergeant effective 18th, and approve to transfer William Keith Chandler from corrections officer to jail corporal 18th. Does anybody have any discussion with anybody else on personnel action? All right, then we have several merit increases below. Does anybody have any discussion with anybody on a merit increase? All right, no discussion there, we'll move on, engineer, Mr. Mas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have four subdivisions for your consideration today. Thomas Elmore subdivision, this is a replat of tracks 13 and 14, so this is a minor for preliminary and final. They're taking these two lots and dividing them to four lots in District 4. This is approximately one-half mile north of Poff Lane and Sewell Road intersection. We have Morris Williams subdivision, this is a replat of Lot 11. This is a minor for preliminary and final, creating three lots from the one in District 4. This is east side at the end of Blackburn Lane. Owens Property subdivision, this is a major for preliminary approval, creating 49 lots in District 2. This is the west side of Morseville Road, about midways between Newby and Huntsville-Brownsville Ferry. And then we have Kennesaw Creek subdivision Phase 3. This is a major for preliminary, creating 87 additional lots in District 2. It's approximately 1,900 feet west of Jones Road on the south side of Nick Davis Road. So, that's all that I've got for your consideration. We have completed all of our herbicide application, and the contractors moved on, and we've completed our portion as well, so. So, if you see anything that we need to have addressed before the next, the next application, then...
When is that?
Um, it'll be midsummer. We'll have, we'll have an application, and then we'll probably have a fall application like we did last year.
Anybody got anything else from Mark? Nothing else from Mark, we'll move on to other business. To amend the staffing plan, to add two part-time deputies, said positions are be paid through the Sheriff's Office Law Enforcement Fund. This is Sheriff making it light me on all this, but he was wanting to hire two part-time deputies to help like traffic control out, I think, one of them at Clement School maybe, and just, just everywhere I know that they was...
Fingernails, stuff like that, too. Fingernails, yeah.
So, I was, that was, he had reached out to me and asked me that a while back, and I told him, they were talking about paying others their funds, so yeah, I was just passing on through to them, so. Any more discussion with that? All right, and then to prove, second on here would be to approve information systems, security office job description, and amend the staffing plan to remove network support specialist two, and this is in the IT department, any discussion with that? And then, third on here, three and four go together. Four, three will be to approve new job description for the engineering department, and the fourth part of it here, what we'll be doing is, is amending the staffing plan under engineering to add two equipment operator threes, one equipment operator two, and one equipment operator one. This is all for the new striping department for the striping truck that we have purchased from Baldwin County, so. Anybody got any discussion with any of that, and anybody got any questions, Mark on that? All right. Fourth on here would be to approve the law of the trade-in of the following piece of equipment, that goes back to our budget revision. We're trading in our caterpillar milling machine that we've had a few years now and trading on the new one, so that's what that budget review, that's what this approved for the following inventory is. Any discussion with that? All right, moving on, no, no schedule to propose here as port of officers, Commissioner Sammet.
Don't have anything, Mr. Chairman. Judge, did you have anything? I'll forfeit my time to you.
No, I wanted to make everybody aware of a polling location that we discussed back in February, where you, we're waiting on a final matter, but I can address that later if you want.
Well, when we get unfinished up here, we'll let you come up and address guilty.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I'm good, I don't...
Commissioner Barstow, Commissioner Black?
Well, I do. In the last meeting, or in the meeting before, we were talking with Commissioner Barstow about how we can help fund for our roads, and what I did is I went back and I did a little bit of research, and I went back and called some previous commissioners, and I talked with Emily, and I've talked with Mark a little bit this morning, and the severance tax that we get from Rogers Group from our two quarries is a dime, is 10 cents per, per ton. Now, that's set statewide unless you're in Wilcox County, Coosa County...
It's ten cents per per ton, now that's set statewide unless you're in Wilcox County, Coosa County, Altauga County, a few more, and they get thirty-three cents, I think it is, for per ton. Uh, previously, uh, Commissioner Turner had gone and spoken with some of these guys from Rogers Group, and we had talked about it one time in Limestone County, we got an extra nickel from the one that was out in District Four, so we're getting fifteen cents a ton. So what I wanted to do is maybe us, uh, have our attorney and maybe the chairman here to go and maybe sit down with Rogers Group and look at maybe for a period of time, like we did the nickel, maybe since we're having more and more, I think we had over seven million tons of rock delivered for Mazda Toyota operation alone, so seven million tons at ten cents a ton, if you double that and go to twenty cents, that's, that's a whole lot more money. We we get this paid to us on quarterly, uh, since the quarries were in, uh, District Three and District Two, what we did in a meeting in two thousand and eighteen or nineteen is until twenty-twenty-five, that money, that severance money goes to District Three and District Two, because the time before, it all went to District Four. Well, um, that's, that's fine, what we, what I ended up doing is making an agreement that all of that money goes to District Two, uh, because Ned needed it, because of Gray Road and Newby Road, and I I don't know what the other road was, so. Maybe it's time for us to go talk to, uh, some of these guys at Rogers Group and see if we can increase that funding. That funding is almost, I don't know, I think each quarter, I I forget how much it is, forty thousand dollars, just rough figure, something like that. So if you increase that, you're looking at, you know, almost three hundred fifty, four hundred thousand dollars a year. And, uh, since they've increased and their, their money has gone up and, uh, uh, wear and tear on the roads have gone up, maybe that'd be an option that we could all discuss somewhere down the road. Y'all good with that? Is that good?
I I'm good with it.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you told us, come up with an idea, and, you know, I didn't, I didn't like your idea, and you may not like my idea, but I wanted to at least bring something to the table and maybe we can all discuss it and.
I think, I think it's fair, but I thought those rates were state.
They are, they are, yeah, it's statewide.
That would strictly be voluntary.
But they volunteer, and they did it with a nickel before, so, I mean, and that nickel before was way before, you know, we brought Mazda Toyota and G E Aviation and Bokar and all this extra in. So if they were willing to do it for District Four coming up and down one road, maybe, you know, I I, they've been good, they've helped us out, they've paved roads, you know, and helped us with rock and stuff here and there for the schools and uh, I think they're making a a fair sum of money, they may be, they may be willing to help us out a little bit.
And that would be a step in the right direction, like, you know, here, six, eight months ago, I don't know, we did a traffic survey.
Yep.
For District Two. Well, Mark and I have got those in, all except one intersection, and they call for a fifteen million dollars worth of, uh, intersection improvements. So when you talk three or four hundred thousand dollars, it's a lot of money.
Yep.
In one way, and then in one way, it's.
It don't hit the, it don't touch the bucket.
Touch anything.
You're right.
Now, in fairness, part of that fifteen million is really more like eight or nine, because about six of it is Highway Seventy-two to Pete's Corner, and then Pete's Corner, and that's going to be Athens and Huntsville, be some of that, but still, nine million dollars worth of intersection improvements is, uh, more money than we know what.
Yeah, right now.
Do with.
Yeah.
Well, y'all just give District Two that whole nineteen million dollar American Rescue funds and.
I don't even know where, I still haven't seen it yet, so I don't really know where it is.
We don't know where that is.
Yeah.
But I, uh, thank you for that.
Yes, sir, I think that would be, that's, that's at least one option, so that, that, maybe that'll work. That's it for me.
Mr. Townsend?
I don't have anything.
Well, um, going back to what you, and you had reached out the other day about that, um, November the fifth of eighteen is when that was voted on to go to District, um, Three and Four, and that was previous.
Three and Two.
Um, Three and Two, yeah, it was previous to me being here, but I did go back and research it, and, um, and then a few weeks, they made that agreement, you and Commissioner Turner at the time made that agreement to pay for Newby, and that road has actually paid off now. So that money, it's, it's, it's coming back now.
I want my part back.
So, well, that's something we got to look into, because that resolution was made till that road was paid off.
Okay.
And, um, like you said, Rogers Group did pay fifteen cents, and even after the state, you know, first of all, it was just a goodwill thing, that's what they done. And then it was a state law passed, said it was a ten percent deal, and then Rogers Group paid another nickel for several years after that, just being, you know, Samaritans of the over at the, when they was over at the West Limestone Quarry. So, um, I mean, I mean, it would be something to reach out to them, I mean, like I said, and then, I think last year we got a hundred and fifty thousand, I believe was the number. So if it went up another nickel, you know, half that, you know, you look at others, you know, it puts you another seventy, eighty thousand dollars, and, you know, and as the time progresses, that's only going to go more, so. That was, um, that was, but that is the deal with that, and I say money to address this gentleman's question earlier. Um, what that is, is the Rescue Act money, and we're working through all that right now, um. I know we have, we have submitted a plan to the state to what all we are going to spend it on, um, a lot of it was going toward like radio systems for upgrade of the, of the, um, police radios and all the fire rescue radios, because in this county, we have so many dead spots. And a lot of it was, we were going to put a million dollars, I think, toward broadband, that was, we're going to try to help with broadband. And then also, we're putting it lots, two million dollars or so into drainage and ditch child work, last week, we had a conversation with that. Um, a lot of it's just, you know, we're looking at mental health, there's a mental health building out there that needs some attention, um. We've looked into several different things, we have a plan together, and you're welcome to come by, and we can go over every piece of it, we. It was about eighteen million dollars that we're going to have to spend, and that's what these things are replying, we hadn't spent any of it yet. We had to have a plan, had to submit it to the, um, state and all, so that's where we're working with all that, so. And, um, like I said, it's several different issues on there, I know that everybody kind of, we looked at the needs of the community, and like I said, broadband was one of the issues, um, the child mental health center is what it is, that, that goes back to the Casa where Ms. Pike and, um, um, and Allen's with, and, um, my mind was blank every minute, and, uh, but anyways, you know, like, you know, our mental health center here in town, you know, is smaller, and it doesn't have a place to separate the two, and that was one of the things we looked at, um. And just a lot of, lot of issues there, and, um, engineer's been working hard with our, um, CFO and all on that project, so. You're welcome to come by, we can show you exactly what we got laid out. Um, so anyways, and, uh, so with all that said, um, gee, um, do you have anything, Judge?
Let me just briefly, I'll give y'all a quick update. Back in February, y'all passed a resolution as it related to adding a polling location in precinct thirteen at Most Merciful Jesus Catholic Church, pending approval by the church, uh, that has not happened and will not be happening, we visited with the City of Madison, our elections director, Bobby Bailey, and I, and the clerk from the City of Madison, Lisa Thomas, visited that facility. The area that they could make available on Election Day did not really accomplish, uh, and really had more hurdles with with access and parking and such, that 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 was not an option, we requested the City of Madison go back to, uh, the school board, or to the superintendent's office, Dr. Nichols, in regards to James Clemmons High School being available, and I had a voicemail this morning after the mayor's office two weeks ago asked me to reach out to the superintendent's office, which I did two weeks ago. I had a voicemail this morning that James Clemmons would not be available, so, uh, we will be at Lamb of God Lutheran Church throughout the election cycle, we will not be requesting an emergency uh, within the three months prior to elections, five weeks from tomorrow. I will do the best we can at Lamb of God, but y'all need to be aware that it will be hope for good weather on May twenty-four, June twenty-one, and November eighth because of the volume at that location. We're going to work with the, uh, staff at Lamb of God to utilize any and all space that we can on Election Day, uh, as, uh, and not just trying to keep maybe one way, we may try to look at funneling voters through both directions, uh, in the facility to get everybody voted as quickly as possible.
Have we got ten thousand, how many voters we got out there?
We have just shy of eight thousand.
Just shy of eight thousand?
Seventy-five, seventy-seven, seventy-eight hundred.
Okay.
It's our largest precinct.
Anybody?
Give y'all that update as it relates to that, since y'all had passed a resolution pending approval, uh, at the Catholic Church, but that is not going to be an option.
All right.
And we now learned that our second option is, is not going to be an option.
That was the church on Seagull's Road, right?
That was the church, the Catholic churches on Seagull's Road, they are going to be building a new church, and the facility that they're in now would be fully available with a very large area that could be an option in the future, but they're not at that point.
Okay. Anybody got anything else for the judge? And I know that's coming up here five weeks, so for the record, the public knows that it will be Lamb of God, and we'll go from there.
The Born Rich Cards will be sending, uh, cards to all voters in Limestone County, the publication notice to all seventy-seven thousand registered voters will be published April thirtieth in accordance with our law.
All right, um, thank you, Judge. Um, I hope everybody had a happy Easter and a safe Easter, and everybody remember what the season's for, um. We'll do something a little different this morning, I'm going to take just a moment, let's pause for a moment of silence for, um, the City of Athens, they've lost one of their council members, Mr. Frank Travis, and, um, let's just take a second and bow our heads and remember them and their prayers. Thank you, everybody, and amen, and, um, we will, um, recess until ten A M. right here, thank y'all.